I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order and declare a quorum that we have seven trustees present. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the College Station Independent Board of Trustees. We are elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in the education, educating of our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and in support of our students. It's going to take us to C. Recognitions, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. This evening, we have students from Oakwood Intermediate and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School who's going to assist us with our pledge and moment of silence. To introduce those students, we have our principals, Mr. Simak from Oakwood and Mr. Ispedia from A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. Gentlemen?
It's my distinct pleasure to introduce you today, Angel Sanchez and Faith Demus. Both sixth graders at Oakwood Intermediate School. Angel is in our orchestra. He is far numbed, perhaps one of the nicest kids I've ever interacted with on a school campus. Liked by everyone, friends with everyone, one of the best kids we have on campus, is a good quality kid, and you can expect to see his name in the paper in years to come. And Faith is new to Oakwood. This is her first year at Oakwood. Last year, she was at Pecan Trail, but we welcomed her with open arms, and she has made quite the impression. She is an avid student, and much, a lot like a lot of us, she has had a curveball thrown at her because of COVID, and I have been in awe of how she has responded. She embodies everything that you need in life to be successful, and because of her grit and determination, I have no doubt that she will do great things moving on in life, and I am really proud of how she has responded to that curveball this year.
I brought with myself all the way from Bobcat Country, a proud seventh grader KK person who, when I asked her what things she wanted to tell about herself, how much she loves basketball and volleyball, especially volleyball, and her favorite subject is math. And representing the eighth grade, I have Ismael Taneo, who also is big in athletics in Bobcat Country, and he prefers tennis and also loves math. And I'm going to turn it over to them to start us on our pledges and our moment of silence.
So please rise for the pledge allegiance to the United States flag, the Texas flag, and the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Now, we have a lot of recognitions that we're very excited about tonight, but before we get to those, would like to recognize the incredible artwork in the back. That is all coming from Forest Ridge Elementary, South Knoll Elementary, Oakwood Intermediate, and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. So if you have a chance, please take an opportunity to see what talented artists we have in this district. That is going to take us to C. Three, where we have an incredible opportunity to recognize some very high-achieving students. Mr. Martindale?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. We have three different student groups we're recognizing this evening. Here in just a moment, Mr. Glenn Wickel is going to assist us. That's the College Station High School Meet Judging Team, our state academic UIL students, and BPA national qualifiers. And students, as Mr. Glenn Wickel calls your name, if you'll come forward, we'll get you your certificate. Please feel free to shake hands with board members, and if you will wait until your respective group is done, wait up here so we can get a group picture of each one of our individual groups. So, Mr. Glenn Wickel?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Members of boards, my distinct pleasure to recognize several outstanding students this evening. We're going to start with the College Station High School Meets Judging Team that recently won the state FFA championship right here in town at the Rosenthall Meat Science Center at Texas A&amp;M University. By winning this state competition, the team has punched their ticket to a national contest to be held in Indianapolis during the National FFA Convention, and that's going to be held in October. All four members of the team placed in the top 35 individually out of 221 contestants from around the state. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized, as Mr. Martindale stated earlier. Placing as the seventh high individual in the state, Caitlin Catrola. And placing as the top individual in the state of Texas, Nathan Kirk. And this group of students is coached by College Station High School CTE teacher, All right. Six A&amp;M Consolidated High School students recently placed in the top six in three different events at the state 5A Academic UIL Championships. Students qualify for the state contest by earning high enough rankings at district and regional competitions. When I call your name, please come forward and be recognized. The first group of students, I will call them individually, but they finished second place in the state as the current events team. And the first one is Freddie Bayman. The second member of the team is Valerie Amokri. And the final member of the team is Andrew Surescu. Second group of students is a duo that placed third in cross-examination debate, Lars Dietz. And his partner is Shrikar Satish. And our final student, won fifth place in news writing in the state of Texas, Medha These students are coached, the current events and cross-examination students are coached We've got one final group of students to recognize tonight. It is our largest group of students. A total of 14 business students from A&amp;M Consolidated and College Station High Schools recently advanced to the Business Professionals of America Virtual National Leadership Conference by placing in the state event. These students have actually since competed in the National Virtual Leadership Conference, and six of them placed in the top 10 nationally. And so, as I call up the students with their state place, I will also, the ones who placed in the national competition, I will also recognize that as well. So, just like last time, when your name is called, please come forward and receive your certificate and be greeted by the board. Kathy Ding. She won first place in Advanced System and Procedures and finished third in the nation. Finishing second place in the state in Business Law and Ethics, Emma Finkie. Finishing first in the state of Texas in Computer Modeling, Demi Hugh. Winning ninth place in Advanced Spreadsheet Applications in the state and seventh at Nationals, Winning first place in state in Payroll Accounting and seventh at Nationals, Justin Park. Winning first place at state in Prepared Speech, Boya Shi. Winning seventh place in the state in Java Programming, Sareya Sunkari. Placing sixth in the state in Health Administration Procedures and eighth in the nation, Insha Placing third in C++ Programming, Sophia Wu. Placing seventh in Advanced Office Systems and Procedures in the state and fifth in the nation, Ruth Yao. And the following four individuals are members of the ninth place in the state Administrative Support Team, Mahu Kanon. And Abby Wilson. And our BPA sponsors, advisors, coaches are Chanika Brooks.
Mr. Martindale, Mr. Nugent, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. All right. That will take us to Item D, the Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda tonight are Items G, H2, H3, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, and J7. Are there any items that anyone would like to have taken off consent tonight? All right. Without any, do we have a motion?
A motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. With a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes seven to zero. That is going to take us to Item E. Any board reports from any of our committees? I know there are a few committees that are no longer meeting, being here at the end of the school year, but I know there's a lot of stuff going on. Any reports?
I was going to say, the Intergovernmental Committee meeting was yesterday. Both myself, Ms. Green, and Mr. Martindale attended that in person at the Brazos Valley Council of Governments. We received basically updates on three different issues, one being a transportation issue with the extension of Highway 36 or the expansion of it, I guess, which down the line may potentially have some impacts in the Bryan-Collage Station area, but I don't believe anything is imminent there. We also received a COVID update from the county as well. And then lastly, an update on various bills for the legislature right now, none of which, there was one that Mr. Martindale may talk about, but none of which were especially applicable to the school district. But the next meeting is September 20th, and as always, if there's something that anybody on the board wants to have brought up with the Intergovernmental Committee, please let myself or Ms. Green know, and we can get that added to the agenda.
All right. Education Foundation had their scholarship awards ceremony last night, and it was lovely. It was amazing. I have to give big props to these ladies this year, the whole team, Teresa Bendon, Amy Hi, Erica Mitchell, and Ashley Harkins. This year, they have taken, in a crazy year, they have still managed to raise money for our schools, and they've still held everything. And last night was no exception. They did a red carpet event that I think everyone thoroughly enjoyed. The students, the recipients got to talk to their donors, which is something kind of new, and I think everyone really, really enjoyed that. And they awarded 103 students $130,000. So it's a record, record year. Also, the Star Educator Program is going on right now. So that's a $10, with the $10 donation. Teachers get a recognition in media, all sorts of different media, and also a pen that they get to keep. So it's something cool for our families to get to do to recognize and thank their teachers through Education Foundation. And in June, Education Foundation will also be doing strategic planning and seeing what they can do to further their organization as well. Lots of good stuff. And again, these, those four ladies have gone above and beyond this year, in my opinion. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Horak? Okay, I want to do one more plug for another group. Citywide PTO met today, and it just reminded me just how important our PTOs are in our schools. This year, you know, was no exception. They've done everything that they possibly could for our schools. They've been creative in how they've managed helping still. And I just want to say thank you to all those parents out there that are staying involved in their schools and doing what they can and being supportive of our community and our school community. So, big shout out to all the PTO and involved parents.
The District Educational Improvement Council postponed for May because it's waiting on the strategic plan to create the district improvement plan, and so that committee will be working through the summer. So think of them while you're off.
And I have, I guess, two. PAC met two weeks ago for the last time for the year. They won't, they'll reconvene next time in September. And really, most of what they talk about is pretty, is similar to what we talk about here. A lot of it is the superintendent's updates from Mr. Martindale on everything from the bond, what's going on with the bond committee and the strategic planning. I think the two questions that, you know, that the teachers brought to the meeting, one was about whether we're going to do virtual next year, and I think we'll talk a little bit more about that maybe, but, you know, we basically shared the numbers that we have seen about, from the survey with that group. And then they were also asking about how we're going to continue to use SchoolAGY next year, and I think the answer was yes, we are going to continue to use SchoolAGY, that it's certainly as a way to communicate with our families and with our students. So, that's the basics for PAC. And then the other, I was just, I know we talked about it in workshop, but I also just felt like a quick report on strategic design. Again, Mr. Martindale, I'm assuming you'll probably share more, but just that we have met five times total now, two since our last board meeting, and we're planning to meet one more this Thursday. And it really has been meaningful work, I feel. It's really been meaningful work for the district. Lots of, lots of great discussions with that group that's a combination of our community members, our teachers, and our staff within the district, and our board representation about, you know, what's great about our district, what we need to keep doing moving forward, and where we need to, you know, to continue to focus to get even, get even better. And I think, you know, we saw our goals earlier, and then the next steps are going to be taking that into really the action plan. So, one more meeting with the core design team there.
Anything else? Just real quick, Mr. Martindale, just a very brief update on Bond Planning Committee. We've had four meetings, and there does seem to be a consensus among the group, and we have one more meeting left on Tuesday, so we should be coming up with a recommendation for the board to hear next month. So, there we go. Mr. Martindale, it takes us to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Board members, I don't have a whole lot of information, but I do have some graphs and some things that'd be easier to see as opposed to me trying to read off without the visuals. So first, I just want to touch on our COVID cases through the course of this year. I will tell you that our active cases as of today are six. That's four students and two faculty members. What you're looking at is new cases by week from the beginning of school. Of course, you can see through the first of semester and where we are now. You can tell beginning, maybe mid-April, in that area, April 19th, the last three, and I anticipate week four will be this week. We have trended in the single-digit numbers as far as new cases. And of course, you can read the graph. The staff is indicated in the red portion of the bar graph, and student cases in the blue. Remember, we have approximately 2,000 staff and over 12,000 students on campus at this point in time. One thing I did want to mention to the group in some conversation with Brazos County Health District, that we're going to enter into a partnership or collaborative with them. Last week, the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine was approved for children 12 and up. So in conversations with the Brazos County Health District, we're planning an optional Pfizer vaccine clinic for any eligible students that are interested. On Saturday, May the 22nd, we'll provide the site. That's here. The Brazos County Health District, of course, will be managing, administering of the vaccines. We just saw this as one more opportunity to partner with the health district, provide a convenience to any of our families that may be interested. We'll communicate the details and the signup information to our families via email tomorrow. I'll provide a recap of the collective board meeting, a number of things that we discussed this evening in that email as well. Of course, participation of any student 17 years or younger, obviously their parents will have to be present. But this is just one more opportunity we thought we'd provide for those that are interested. Where we are as of today, this is our virtual, our instructional model selection. We currently, we've been hovering the last few weeks between 89 and 90% of our students onsite in the building, obviously with 10 or 11% still receiving virtual instruction. Kind of breaking this down through the course of the school year, you can see when we started way back August 18th, seems a while ago, and we've experienced a number of things through the course of this year. But when we started school, we had right at 68% of our students receiving onsite instruction from the beginning, and you can see how that number has progressively moved up through the course of the year or two, as what I just reported to you a few minutes ago, the 89% receiving instruction onsite and 11% virtual at this point in time. We did send a, this is a second survey. We sent one out, I believe it was probably February or early March, to our virtual students, but we sent a second survey out to our remaining virtual students. That was the week of April 26th, just to kind of get a gauge of interest in a possible virtual offering for next school year. We sent it out to over 1,200 families. Again, these are of our current virtual students in grades pre- Again, these are of our current virtual students in grades pre-K through 11. We didn't include our seniors, obviously, they're graduating, and we're trying to determine numbers for 21, 22. And the results, when they closed, this was open for a week, you can kind of see the responses below. The question and the possible responses are listed there. The question, if offered, would your child be participating in virtual learning next year? The three possible responses, as you can see, yes, my child would participate in virtual learning if offered. We had 190 responses there. No, my child will return onsite, 155. And if my student returned onsite learning if things continue to improve with COVID, that was 324, for a total response of 669. I kind of take that information, break it down a little bit farther by grade level, so you can see counts of the responses of the 190, those indicated that they would have an interest if we offered it, just to kind of give you scope of what that looks like. And based on these numbers, if you look, 14 maybe in seventh grade, nine in fourth grade, 30 with our juniors, based on these particular numbers, 190 total. But again, as you spread it out, basically from K through 12, next year, the data just really doesn't support the resources that would be required to offer a virtual component next year. So, our plan is moving forward or to be fully onsite and not offer a virtual component for 21, 22, based on this data. Also, yesterday, we sent an end-of-year survey out. That will run, of course, we sent it out yesterday, it will close Friday, May the 28th. And really, the stakeholders involved in this survey, of course, our families, students, our campus staff and teachers. The survey covers a range of different topics. Families, again, receive the email Monday morning inviting them to take the survey. The link is here. Students 3 through 12 will have an opportunity, our principals are working to provide the opportunity for them to participate in the survey during the school day. And once we close and pull that data together, we'll provide the results of that end-of-year survey sometime in June, and we'll report that back to the Board of Trustees. Upcoming events, and several of you heard this, Strategic Design, next meeting is May the 20th. They will have deliverable, or the final product, to the Board of Trustees on June the 14th. The next Bond Planning Committee, of course, we had an update on both these items in workshop. Next Bond Planning Committee will be May 25th. I would anticipate the committee providing a recommendation for the board to consider at the June 15th meeting. Of course, our last day of school is May the 27th. I probably didn't need to put that on there because everyone knows that date. May 27th, College View High School graduation, that's at Christ United Methodist Church. That begins at 7:00 PM. And of course, College Station High School, Friday, May 28th, that'll be at Cougar Field. Start a little bit later with our outdoor graduations because of the heat, that'll be 8:00 PM. May the 29th for console at Tiger Field, and that will start at 8:00 PM as well. And when you have the weather that we've had this past week, you have backup dates and times as well. But I'm not sharing those yet until we absolutely need to. But we do have them on the calendar, just in case. Ms. Nujent, that concludes superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Before we go to E2, I'd like to ask Ms. Julie, do we have any public comment for this, okay, for this agenda item? Just wanted to be sure. So it's going to take us to E2. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding changing outdoor mask wearing from required when unable to maintain social distancing to optional effective Friday, May 28th, 2021, and mask-wearing endorsed from required to optional effective Monday, June 28th. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Nujent. So we wrote this agenda last Thursday and posted it on Friday. Today, at about 12:45 PM, the governor released his latest executive order that prohibits schools from requiring mask-wearing after June the 4th. Because of this, I am going to alter my recommendation. I'll provide the board rationale for the recommendation I'm making, and of course, we can have all relevant conversation associated with this agenda item. With the executive order that came out today, I'm recommending that CSISD change our mask-wearing policy from required to optional effective Friday, May the 28th. There's several reasons, obviously, the executive order, but this is the day after school is out, but also this date positions us for masking to be optional as we enter into our comprehensive high school graduations that evening. My rationale for this date, again, we have six and a half more days of school remaining. We have done well all year. We're right here at the finish line, and we can kind of, we can see the finish line. We have publicly stated that we continue our mask-wearing until the end of this school year. We communicated that, I believe, back in March. Reminder, we have finals and graduation next week, and I think if we continue with this mitigating tool through that time, then we don't put anything at risk as far as close contact or quarantining, which none of those things have changed, none of those protocols have been altered at this point in time. And what we don't want to do is compromise our students getting through the final week, and in particular, compromise any of our seniors as they try to wrap up their final exams and participate in graduation ceremony. The executive order happened at 12:45 today. That was news to me, as it was everyone else in this state. I will touch on this as well. I know that the University of Texas A&amp;M at 5:30 today is going masking optional effective immediately. I do want to speak to this, two things. The executive order doesn't allow the university any discretion. They have to begin effective immediately. Public schools have the discretion through June the 4th. So there's a difference there. Also, a difference that I'd like to remind the group, the university is not in session with students at this point in time, and as I mentioned earlier, we have six and a half more days remaining. So that is my recommendation at this point, Ms. Nujent, understanding that more has happened the last five hours than however many weeks prior to.
All right, we have a recommendation from Mr. Martindale.
Mr. Nujent, I move to approve as presented.
I'd like to offer, have some discussion on this.
Just one second, Ms. Green. If we have a motion, if we get a second, then we'll open it up to discussion. Absolutely.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So, while I think we've done an incredible job all year, and I completely appreciate the recommendation, one thing that, as we have, obviously, we're tracking the numbers very closely, and we have put the mitigation protocols in place, vaccines have now become available to all staff and teachers. You know, over the last couple of months, all those that wanted to get vaccinated could become vaccinated. I just struggle with continuing mandating masks. I understand getting through the school year, what, six and a half days? But when I look at, I just struggle with it. I'm having a very hard time with mandating the masks when we have six cases in CSISD, when we have 15 hundredths of a percent in Brazos County right now. So there's not this overwhelming surge out there that we're trying to protect against. I'm not saying, let's go mask-free, but what I am saying is I think we need to consider giving our faculty, our staff, our teachers, our parents, our students, the option to choose themselves whether or not they want to continue wearing a mask, assuming the risk. I understand, you know, that there are protocols in place, but it is such a small likelihood that we're going to see an outbreak. I'm just concerned with us continuing the mandate when we're seeing the lift in our local businesses, Texas A&amp;M. You know, students are making the choices. We made a choice tonight to take our masks off to take a picture. I think we need to give those the option in our district to make this choice for themselves, assuming the risk of what that looks like.
I tend to agree with Ms. Green. My only concern is how that interplays with the close contact rules. And I know Mr. Martindale mentioned that just a few moments ago. So if you have, for example, and we've done, the district, I think, has just done an incredible job since August in the mitigation protocols, the fact that schools remained open, the fact that we haven't had, you know, classes, there's been a one or two, but classes shut down, so forth and so on. And so the key to that, or part of that, is because of the mask requirements. Because if you're masked, you're not considered to be in close contact, and so you don't have to quarantine, so forth and so on. And so, and I don't know who can maybe answer this, Mr. Martindale, but if you have a class this, tomorrow, and half the kids are wearing masks and half aren't, and someone tests positive, how would that scenario be handled?
Under current protocol, and I'm going to get our local expert, Ms. Perry, up here as well to confirm what I say, it would be within six feet for 15-minute time duration without the mitigating factor of a mask would be considered a close contact. I think it's on the unmask. It's if the mitigating tool is the mask.
Okay, so...
As we discuss these with the health department, correct?
Correct. In discussion regarding specific cases with the health district, the most critical component of the contact tracing is, was the individual who has COVID masked. And so if the individual with COVID was masked, then you have the mask as the mitigating factor. If the individual who was in close contact had the mask, but the individual with COVID did not have the mask, they would still have to quarantine. That becomes particularly problematic in classrooms where kids are moving around throughout the day for instructional purposes, as well as in secondary, when our students are changing classes and around many students throughout the day.
Okay. And this is one of those deals where I think school districts have just been put into a horrible position by our governor, the CDC, the TEA, you name it, because there's so many chefs in the kitchen, and we have so many different rules to play by. And when the public hears that there's no longer a mask mandate, what they don't hear is that we still have close contact rules, we still have quarantining issues that we have to deal with to make sure that schools stay open and classes stay open. So, you know, that being the case, as much as I agree with Ms. Green, you know, I don't know if, I don't know, I'm still kicking it around in my head, is if it's worth running that risk for six more days, even the smallest percentage it is, you know? The, if nothing else, though, I would like potentially to offer an amendment at some point, I'm not doing it right now, but to make that date the 27th, so even the kids from College View might have that option for their graduation. But anyway, I'll just, I'll stop rambling now.
I would mention the 27th. Currently, in the church, I'm visiting with Ms. Fagan because she's made those arrangements, that the, they're a protocol the church are implementing as well. So, I mean, I would absolutely, if the church adjusts their protocol and allowed that scenario for that graduation ceremony, and we do enact this for the 28th, then, you know, with the board's approval, I would utilize discretion for Thursday evening for those graduates as well. But right now, the protocol that they have in place includes masking, and that's why I picked that particular date.
I do, I just want to add that, while I completely understand, right, that we have the protocols for the close contact, when we originally, and when the governor originally came down with the mask mandate for all of the state of Texas, it was to mitigate the spread of COVID. This was prior to the vaccines. This was to, I think we were, we're all in agreement that as a public health crisis, we needed to do that. We've done that. We have vaccines now available. We have extremely low percentage right here in the Brazos Valley, as well within our school district. And again, I am not, I feel like we just need to give the option back to the staff, the faculty, our parents, our students, and whether or not they want to assume that risk, the very low risk that it is, for the remainder of the year. I don't think, I just, it starts to feel like, well, I will stop with that. I'm, you know, I have a senior myself, and I don't know that I would, that, you know, she will be able to make that decision if we were to make masks optional effective immediately. She'll be able to make that decision, knowing the risks of, if this were to happen, you would have to quarantine, you would potentially miss graduation. I just think, I think we really need to look at and consider giving this choice back to
Certainly appreciate the discussion. I mean, I am all for us moving away from wearing masks, but I certainly think we should wait these six and a half days to do it. I guess, I mean, because I agree, we are bringing, the numbers are down, the vaccines are working, but I also feel like, on the other side of it, I feel like it is, well, I guess a couple of things. One is, our students and even our teachers are not really given the option about coming to school or not, right? That's a little bit of a difference. I can choose to go into a store or a restaurant or anything, but we want our kids in school. And right now, many of them, not many, but still a number of them are feeling safe because we've had protocols in place. And then, and the other piece of it, I just don't really feel like that six and a half days is worth the potential disruption that it would have on the school in those six and a half days. I mean, some parents feeling like they don't want to have their kids in the classroom, so they pull them home. Or, you know, again, I have a senior also, and if she, even if she was wearing her mask and somebody in the classroom was not and got COVID, I mean, I don't want her to have to miss, have the risk of missing her exams or missing graduation.
Is that the case? So if she's around someone with a mask, I just want to make sure I completely understand that, then the person with the mask would have to go home?
The person who has COVID must have the mask on in order to use the masking as a mitigating factor. So if the person who has COVID is unmasked, then other individuals, whether they are masked or not, would have to quarantine.
Okay.
We got to get these kids through these finals, get them, I mean, get them through their final exams and get them through graduation. And I just think it's not worth the disruption in these six and a half days. I'm all for noon on the 27th of May, but that's how I feel.
The only thing that I'd like to correct with what you said is that we do give, we don't force anyone in person. So we do give the option for virtual. It's not a, they're not required to be in person.
But if we change that on the drop of a dime tonight on those students and those families, we have not really given them the option to go virtual, go back to virtual now. That is ended, right? Correct me if I'm, we really have not.
Correct. We've been trying to manage those in grading cycles and those types of things through the course of the semester. I will tell you, when we made the announcement that we continue masking through the remainder of the semester, which we did, and I understand many circumstances have changed, a lot of families made the decision to remain based on that piece. And I have spoken, you know, already, no one is more ready than me. I can't... I can assure you, and this as well, is, this is a situation where we have, you know, a couple of bad options as far as decisions to make. Just as I, if I remove, from a personal standpoint, and look at this professionally as superintendent, we're six and a half days out. Am I excited about keeping masks? No. But I know with those and that mitigating tool, we'll get through those six and a half days. Without it, odds, yep, probably. I mean, what I think would be crushing to me is to have to tell a senior, or if it's a senior in an English IV class, seniors, hey, you guys have to quarantine. To me, that exchange over six and a half days, we've done it for 180, to me, that's not worth it. And I completely understand what you're saying, Amanda, because I'm all about choice as well. And this is not easy for any of us. It just feels like one more thing in a year where we've had to make a lot of very difficult decisions. But I think that we've been very systematic with our decision-making, and I think that has got us here today. And we made it through the year, handful of classes that were closed through the course of the year, our kids experienced activities. And maybe everything would be fine, but I don't know that with certainty. With the mask in place through the 27th, then I, I'm pretty certain then. And I just want to get our kids, in particular our seniors, to graduation. And so, and every community is going to have a different perspective on this, and they have to make their individual decisions, but the finish line's right there.
Everybody brings up a good point, but one thing that came to mind about, because you want it effective as of now, and so is that fair? Sorry. Is that better? Okay. You want, you want it effective as of now, right, to be, masks to be removed? But if you were administrator of a school, no.
Hang on, hang on. I, I'm recommending us discussing it being optional. I am actually not against wearing masks in school personally. I'm advocating for it to be optional, to let our, our numbers are so low, let's give our families and teachers and staff the option on whether or not they wear a mask.
Some antics, but I understand.
Well, it's a big difference.
Yes, okay. You want to make it optional effective now. That's what you're desiring.
That is what I'm recommending, yes.
That's what you desire, as well as recommend. And I understand that. However, is it fair to the administrators here, assistant principals or teachers, bus drivers, or transportation, to get an email as soon as we dismiss and by 5:00 AM in most cases, be prepared to handle a completely new change for 14,000 students and 2,000 staff? Logistically, as a manager of people, if you think that's fair.
What would need to change?
What do you mean, what needs? They have to expect it, yes, okay.
Whether you make the option or not.
It's true. But you're telling them effective immediately, we have a new policy in place.
And we could discuss, we could discuss dates.
Well, that didn't seem, that's why I specified and tried to understand your.
Recommendation.
Well, I'll wait for it.
I think we're, I think we're going down a rabbit hole here, and I'm going to jump in because we all have valid points in this, and, y'all, I'd throw this thing in the trash right now if I did. I would. I would have done it two months ago, probably. Why? I don't know. I'm just done. But in the end, starting this school year on August 18th and finishing on May 27th as a board member was my goal. And if it takes six and a half days to get there, I've got to stick to it. Because what we've done through this whole year has somehow worked, and I hope we're the poster child of Texas to show that we have made it through, and we've got six and a half more days. And when I break this down and go, should we not, or should we at least make it optional? Sure, yeah, I'd love to go optional, but there's too many variables at hand for us to go that route right now. The seniors, there's teachers, there's staff, there's kids. I mean, when we break this down, yeah, there's a whole lot of what ifs. But there were a whole lot of what ifs if we started on August 18th, and we still did it. And there was a whole lot of what ifs, what we're going to do in the spring semester, and we still did it. And that's what I'm saying at this point, is that, yeah, it's six and a half days, and while that seems like a drop in the bucket, I think we can justify and say, if we can stick this out and get to it, we're going to start next August pretty fresh, pretty new, and with some sort of normalcy. So why do we need to change something now to finish out the goal that we had when we started in August? So that's what I'm trying to get at with what I'm trying to present, is, y'all, for seven hours, I've wrestled with this since 12:45, listening to what he had to say, listening to what could happen, what we should do, what everybody thinks we should do. And it's been tough. Because, yeah, I've thought about, man, let's just go mask-free, optional tomorrow. Let's start next Monday. But what are we accomplishing then? We're not accomplishing anything. We're just turning that needle a little bit and hoping that everything falls into place. And like Mr. Martindale said, will we probably be okay whichever decision we go? Yeah, we probably will. But I'm not willing to put my stamp of approval on that chance, when I know what has worked from August 18th to May 18th. So that's why I'm sticking with, let's get through it, let's get to the end, and we'll start fresh next year.
Listen, I completely respect the discussion here. I mean, don't, again, don't get me wrong, I'm offering another perspective from constituents, from staff, that I've heard. And I feel like it's prudent that we have the discussion. If that's not the will of the board, if the board chooses to continue the mask mandate through the 28th, then so be it. But I think it's important that we do our due diligence and have this discussion of other options and making this optional for citizens.
Well, and I want to add too, in response to Mr. Horak's point of, you know, what's the benefit of it? You know, I think the fact that so many of our parents, so many of our kids, so many people in our community want that freedom and that choice is very, very valid. Again, the only, I'm with you, I'd vote for it in a second to end it right now, other than the close contact rules, which, you know, agree with them or disagree with them, they are what they are, until people more powerful than us change those rules. And so solely because of that, I would like to make an amendment to the motion, though, to amend, let me back up, with the understanding that it's still subject to the facilities' rules when it comes to College View's graduation, but to amend the motion to have the mandatory mask requirement in at noon on the 27th. So that would then give Mr. Martindale the flexibility, if the church or College View is having their graduation changes, their protocol, to allow us to, allow the parents and the kids to not wear them there.
Okay. Now, it was, it was Mr. Hall's motion. I'm sorry? Okay.
Second.
So we have a new motion and a second? I'm sorry? Well, it's amendment with a second, but, you know, we're, we can still.
I just have a quick question.
We can still discuss. Yes.
So if the TEA comes out Thursday and eliminates the close contact protocols, what is our move then? What would we, what would we do?
Well, assuming that the, or the motion as it stands passes, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Martindale, but if we really wanted to follow the new, well, I mean, to change our policy, we would have to call a meeting, which would probably be Monday or Tuesday. If we, if that was what.
Could we add an amendment to this motion, that if TEA lifts the protocols, that we will become mask optional?
Mr. President, I don't want to jump, but I think.
I'm looking at my attorney right now.
I think procedurally, we have to vote on the first proposed amendment before we can have another amendment to the original motion.
Okay. Just, again, the, I really appreciate the discussion. This is something, obviously, we've all been living with for 14 months now. And just with what I do, the nature of my job, I'm in the middle of it all day long. And I see people every day that want to burn these, and I would be lying if I, if I said I didn't share that opinion. I cannot wait to get rid of this. But I also have to appeal to people who, I literally had someone, I've told a couple of you this, I had someone come into my place of business yesterday in a gas mask. And it was, I see people every week who they say, this is the first place I've come in 12 months, in 14 months. And I will be completely honest, I don't understand that. But there are a lot of people that feel that way. If we were to make mask optional tomorrow, I think the vast majority of our community would rejoice. But I also fear, and I don't know what percentage it would be, it would be small, but if 5% of our families would be scared or fearful, whether right or wrong, it's how they feel to send their kids to school. If it's 5% for six and a half days, I mean, I can go another six and a half days until I torch this. And trust me, I'm going to, in fact, I may do it at graduation, Mr. Martindale. But I know that so many families, and again, I think Ms. Green started it, and others have echoed it, Mr. Martindale, you and your team have done an amazing job. And there are so many leaders and educators out here, what you have had to do this year, I can't believe I'm going to use this word, because I never wanted to hear it again for the rest of my life, but it's unprecedented. What you all had to do and the work that you put in to make sure that the students and staff were safe and educated has been amazing. And I'm very proud to be part of this district. But I know when we started at 65%, we all thought that was a great number. But the policies that you put in place were those that led others to come in and get us to that 90% mark and that they feel safe. Are these policies, I hope, that are in place next year? Absolutely not. I certainly hope we can come up with something, I don't know who said it tonight, but a little bit more normal. But just personally, I, and I understand the close contact, when the governor lifted the mask mandate in March, the one thing I fell back on was, while I don't know what this does, I do know that according to someone much higher up than us, that it's a mitigating factor, and it would, it would keep kids out of quarantine if they had it on. And I thought, for the last few weeks of school, that's worth it. And no matter which way, if we went one way or the other on this, do I think we're going to be okay either way? Absolutely. Am I a big believer in choice and option? But I think Mr. Hall's got a good point as far as pulling the rug out from, and I've talked to a couple of staff today, who, just two, but they were like, let it ride, let it ride. We've done this for 35 weeks, we can do it one more. So anyway, but again, whatever is decided, I will respect the will of the board and, and, you know, I don't know. I'm just, I'm proud to be sitting up here with y'all. And it's, 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 it's a good discussion, but it's tough. It's tough. Because we've got to consider people who, at least for me, who think way different than I do, and I've got to work to understand it. And I don't do very well at that always. I'll be quiet.
Were we needing a point of order clarification regarding amendments?
Yes.
And whatnot? So there is an, a motion to amend the original motion on the floor with a second, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. The next thing would be to vote on whether or not to accept that amendment, okay? It requires a majority of vote, four to three. If that passes, then the amended motion is now on the floor, and should there be any additional amendments to that motion, you would treat it the exact same way.
Okay. So we need to vote on the original motion?
Nope. You need to vote on the amendment first, if you want to amend the original motion. There is a motion and a second on the floor for the amendment to the original motion.
And Mr. Ben, can you clarify your motion, please?
Can you just change the date?
Is your mic on?
Change the date in the original motion to noon on May 27th.
Is everyone clear on the amendment to the recommendation of Mr. Martindale and administration?
With some schools not letting out until afternoon on that date, just throwing that out there. Where did we come up with noon?
I got that from Ms. McAdams.
That was my fault. What time is the last school out?
Wow, he threw you under the bus.
If you're looking to capture the College View graduation, 5:00 PM would suffice, Mr. Ben.
Yep. So I'm going to withdraw my, withdraw my proposed amendment, or my amendment, and, which I assume I can do, and then I don't.
I'm looking for clarification on that. Do we need to vote down the original amendment now?
I would think so.
Okay, let's do that. All right. And honestly, I'm going to have fun voting you down, so. We have, we have an amendment and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. All right. The amendment is voted down six to one, and that goes in the minutes, that's great.
I move to amend the original motion to 5:00 PM on the 27th.
Okay. Second.
All right. So we have an amendment to the original motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So the amended motion will pass six to one. Well, you want to make a motion for?
I'd like to make.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little unclear.
That last vote was just to amend the original motion. So the first vote was to deny the noon on Thursday.
Right.
Okay? Then another motion was made for 5:00 PM on Thursday. That passed. Now we have an original motion that says the mask mandate is, or the, whatever it says, it's at 5:00 on Thursday, is the amended original motion from the 28th to 5:00 PM on Thursday to 27th. That's where we are right now. That is not yet, the original motion that has been amended is now on the table.
Okay. I thought, okay.
You voted to amend the original motion.
Okay, okay. Fair enough.
This is what I would say.
Okay. So now we are voting on the amended motion.
It's the 5:00 PM.
I'm sorry?
The 5:00 PM.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay. So all in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. So the motion passes six to one. So now we are looking at the possibility of another amendment based on a hypothetical. I don't, okay. I don't, okay. Okay, well, now Ms. Green, correct me if I'm wrong. We had talked about amending it, and again, I'm a little unclear on this because amending it based on a hypothetical.
My question is, if the TEA, can we add to the motion? If the TEA comes out with guidance on Thursday, that we're no longer following close contact protocols and quarantine, will we make masks optional? And I think your answer was, we would have to call a meeting. And my question was, can we add that as an amendment to this current motion?
And we were told we had to vote on that first, is that, that's correct? That's what I thought.
Mr. President.
Which we've done, yes.
The motion as amended has already passed.
Yes.
So if Ms. Green would like to make a new motion, I think she can do that under this particular agenda item. But it would have to be an entirely new motion.
Sure, no, no, I understand that. That's what I thought we were doing. So if you wanted to make a new motion.
I would like to make a motion that if TEA offers guidance this week, that we make, that there is no close contact or quarantine, that we make masks optional for the district.
I'll second.
Now, would we need to, well, so we have a motion and a second, so I guess some discussion. My question is, when? Make it optional, when?
As effective as the guidance, if they say close contact is no longer recommended as of this date, then we follow that protocol or that guidance.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll just say, basically for the same reasons I had before, I just don't think it's worth having that in place, really for the disruption that it could cause on the school district in six, five, four, three, two days left, where the same, I think you said it very well, Mr. Nugent, better than I did about, you know, there still is a percentage of people out there, and of our families and our students, who are, came back to school because we made a commitment to keep their students safe. And what they felt was safe was to have masks on through the end of the school, through the end of the school year. And I feel like we, as a board, made that kind of commitment to them. And a lot of families made that choice to come to school because of that. And I just, again, I don't feel it's worth a couple of days after this wonderful journey that, I say wonderful because we have gotten through the school year so well, this journey that we've been on to cause a possible disruption to our families and our staff for this, for those few days. So it's really the same argument, I just don't think that's worth it. Let's do 5:00 on the 27th and be ready to, ready to move on.
What is the disruption, though?
Yeah, that, I was going to ask.
Well, again, this thought that, you're thinking about the families who are in, who, that difference, some of that difference between the 65% of the kids who were here and now the 89. They have come to school because they, we have had good protocols in place, including masks, and their families feel safe. And they are here and they come to the class and they want to finish out the year because they feel they have that commitment that those masks are going to be there. I do believe, I don't know what the percentage is, but I know there would, I foresee there would be some families who would just pick up and say, if we said no masks or masks optional tomorrow, that they would want to stay home. And I know, I think that hurts them, those students, but I also think it hurts, I mean, it just hurts the whole district. So again, I just, as Mr. Horak said too, six and a half days, these kids have been so resilient. Our teachers, our staff, the staff has done so much to make this work. Just don't think it's worth throwing that away potentially. It's just not worth it for those last few days.
And I just don't understand how it's throwing anything away. Because I mean, that same 5% does that mean they're not going to, if we don't have mandatory masks in next August, that they're not going to bring their kids to school? And I mean, at some point.
Right.
I completely agree with Ms. Green, that at some point where the numbers are low, the government hasn't mandated that we have masks, that we need to do it. It's just the right thing to take away, this, as everybody at this desk, at this table, I think has said, this is not fun. This is not, this is a distraction.
And if the environment completely outside of our district is not, they're given the choice. And the TEA eliminates protocols. What I'm saying is, we voted as a board, right, to have, to keep masks mandated until the 27th. So the question and the biggest factor in that is the close contact protocols, correct me if I'm wrong. If that is lifted, what I'm saying is, that takes away the inherent disruption or risk of being sent home and not having graduation and that type of thing. All I'm saying is, listen, I am, again, I am, I just want us to have this discussion. I am not saying, don't wear masks. I'm saying, let's give the option with what we've, we have done. This district has done an incredible job. I'm absolutely not saying that they haven't, nor should we throw that away per se. But we have to, we've got to also apply some common sense and really take a look at the environment outside. And if we're going by mandates and the TEA lifts the protocols and the quarantine, what are we doing?
Again, I'll just say, we've made a commitment to, I feel like we've made a commitment. I am all ready to take the mask off. I'm vaccinated, I am so ready to. I feel like it really, I feel like it is kind of that tearing the rug out from under the folks at this last, without any warning, that there will be families who don't feel safe. And I just don't think, I don't think that that is, they may have to make other plans for the fall. And that's their business and their choice, you know, or they may, but I don't think it's fair to have them making other plans for, you know, tomorrow or for the end of this week. Let's just get them through those six and a half days. That's kind of how I look at it. Because yeah, after that, they can make their choices. And hopefully, we're moving forward with our normal full open school with no masks. But it just seems like it's kind of, it would be a last minute, quick decision that's not fair to some of those folks. And again, I think we've, our students can persevere for six and a half more days. They've been amazing.
Mr. Martindale, are we prepared, if this is what we choose to do as a board, or if this is what the board votes for, are we prepared to react to the families that decide they are not comfortable coming to school? Are we prepared to give final exams? Are our teachers prepared to give final exams online? And allow those students that choose, the families that choose that, to switch to virtual in this last week of school? And I don't know about the teachers.
The logistics would be interesting. I don't know if you switch from the virtual as opposed to have them just work from their Schoology folder with six days remaining. And if TEA makes an adjustment, I wouldn't first, the commissioner has calls every other Thursday, maybe. I know he's scheduled for this Thursday. If he makes any adjustment to the protocol, what is the effective date of that? You know, we're down to the last week of school, basically. So we could, I think if anything this year has proved, we can do whatever we have to. But the logistics of pulling that off would be rather challenging. But we'll do what is necessary. What I anticipate, Amanda, with the protocol, if he puts anything out new, since the executive order from the governor stated June 4th, my suspicion is, whatever the commissioner comes out with, if it's this week or next week or whenever, my suspicion is, is that it would be linked to the June the 4th. But that is purely my speculation. None of these actions have been predictable. So we can make happen what would need to happen.
Quite honestly, I'm still just trying to wrap my head around the decision that was, that was made today by our governor. And I'm clearly, I'm not saying much because I'm struggling with this. I have this major battle going on in my own head. I don't know.
And I guess I have this point. Outside of the executive order that happened at 12:30 today, what conversation would we have been having otherwise? So with that being said, I don't know, Mr. Nugent, of course, the board can, whatever additional comments or conversation the group needs to have, I think there's, I believe there's a motion, is there a second? And a second?
Yeah, the second.
Maybe move forward with that. And that gives us some parameters to be prepared for the future or not. Whether it's the 27th, if TEA makes some adjustments and we're able to interpret those accordingly, then we can follow suit. So I think it's obvious this is a difficult conversation from everyone. And we all want to do the best, understanding that regardless of what decision we make, it's going to be the wrong one for half the people and the right one for the other half. So I think, again, with six and a half days, we need to make decisions and move forward and see ourselves through the school year.
Well, we do have a motion and a second. We've had discussion, I don't want to, if there's anyone else who has anything to offer, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Okay, the motion is, and I apologize because I have a hard time dealing with hypotheticals, but if TEA reverses, changes their policy for close contact, and not quarantine, but for close contact this Thursday, that we would immediately, well, we would follow whatever their recommendations are, whatever date that is, if it's the next day, it would be the next day, I guess. Is that correct, Ms. Green? Okay. Okay, so all in favor? In fact, let's raise hands on this one. If, so, all in favor? Say aye and please raise your hand, we have one.
Aye.
Okay, and all opposed?
Aye.
All right, so the motion is voted down five to two. All right. Let's move on. Thank y'all very much. That is going to take us to item F. Item F, hearing of citizens. Ms. Julie, do we have any, no cards? Okay. Look at you, trying to get me in trouble. Skipping that. Okay, item H1, receiver report related to instructional technology. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Board members, as a part of our monthly board program reports, we have Ms. Stephanie Ryan here, our CSISD digital learning coordinator. She'll provide us a report on instructional technology. Ms. Ryan?
Get this ready. Good? Okay. All right, good evening, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Nugent and members of the board. Thank you so much for having me here tonight to discuss our digital learning program here in CSISD. For those of y'all that I have not been able to meet in person, my name is Stephanie Ryan. And like he said, I'm the coordinator of digital learning for the district. I have the privilege of overseeing our district level instructional technology initiatives and supporting our campuses with their instructional technology needs. This includes providing professional learning for teachers and working with teachers in designing technology-rich learning experiences. I also get to partner with our content curriculum coordinators to coordinate on the infusion of technology into our curricular documents across all grade levels and content areas. Tonight's short presentation will cover several updates and information on our digital learning program as well as some of the impacts from this past COVID year. I'm not going to read this vision word for word, but I do want to point out that our focus is to support teachers to purposefully embed technology into their learning experiences. We strive to engage our staff in the professional development that's needed to build these technology-rich lessons so that our students can leave our district with the skills needed to be productive citizens in our technology-driven society. I want to give you all a peek into the support network that is in place for our digital learning needs here in CSISD. I already mentioned my role, so I'm going to spare you the repeat on that. But our newest addition, as of January of this year, is our integration specialist. We hired Lauren Finkner, a former Pebble Creek teacher and campus technology facilitator into this role. She serves at the district level, so she's supporting all 19 campuses with me. Her role serves as more of a granular level support position where she's on campuses, working with different teacher groups to plan, co-design and model technology-rich lessons. She also plays a crucial role in developing and delivering relevant professional learning for all teachers. I also have 25 amazing teachers serving as campus technology facilitators across the district. These full-time teachers serve their campus as a stipend individual to support the instructional technology needs on their campus when time allows for it around their primary role as a classroom teacher. We have several professional learning activities throughout the year to help develop and grow our digital learning support positions. During the fall of each year, we support our campus technology facilitators as they earn their Google Level 1 or 2 Certified Educator credentials. They are required to complete both certifications within their first two years as a CTF and then maintain those certifications beyond that. Now during the spring and summertime, we allow them to choose one out-of-district professional learning opportunity so that they are able to learn and collaborate with educators outside of our district as they develop their digital learning skills and create that solid knowledge base. They bring this learning back to their campuses in the form of professional development sessions or in planning sessions with their teachers in designing lessons that have technology purposefully embedded. Now in addition to these two, we also ask our CTFs to engage in a TEA-approved virtual teaching course that is offered through Pasadena ISD this past year. As you can imagine, our most recent circumstances fostered the need to hone in on this virtual teaching skill and to be able to support those on their campuses that are in a virtual teaching role. The next few slides, I'm going to discuss some of the COVID impacts that we have experienced in digital learning here in the district. First and foremost, the most obvious one was our switch to at-home learning last spring, or what we like to call that spring break that never ended. Our teachers turned on a dime and they provided some form of virtual learning for all students for the rest of the year through Schoology, which is our learning management system. Now during our COVID closures, the increased professional learning needs of our teachers surfaced. And we welcome the opportunity to shift many of our efforts to design and deliver that learning. Professional learning was one of our high needs from teachers during our COVID closures. And this is still the case according to the results from some of our most recent staff surveys. While we were all working from home, some of my campus technology facilitators and I managed to deliver 37 different professional learning sessions over Zoom for our teachers during the mornings, afternoons and evenings over the course of those months that we were at home. Our main focus for professional learning, other than how to teach virtually, was to move beyond that how to use the resource and focus more into the purposeful integration of the resource into our lessons to promote things like collaboration, engagement and extending that learning beyond the walls of the classroom. Now, as most of you know, our COVID spring allowed us the opportunity to offer both virtual and in-person learning this current school year. Many of our teachers were tasked with teaching both virtual and in-person, which was quite the undertaking. Our teachers have done an outstanding job meeting this challenge head-on. And we are continuing to grow as an organization from our experiences. Prior to our COVID year, we had a good mix of digital learning resources that were regularly used in classrooms to supplement and extend learning. Now gradually over the past year, we have added more resources to support those growing digital learning needs. We now have a vast collection of some amazing digital resources that are used all- We now have a vast collection of some amazing digital resources that are used all over the district, both in-person and virtual. The curriculum coordinators, curriculum writers, our new specialists, and myself are all actively working to infuse these digital resources into our curriculum documents, so that teachers have the opportunity to utilize these in a purposefully designed, standards-aligned learning experience. Our experience with at-home learning, as stressful as that was, caused a lot of our teachers to take some digital learning risks while we were fully virtual. We were able to see many of them continue to utilize technology in their lessons when they came back to in-person classes this past fall and spring. This increase that we've seen in digital learning experiences that are present in our classrooms today has not only been a silver lining of this pandemic, but it's fostered our need for more digital learning support, more professional learning, and more devices for us to use across the district moving forward. Thankfully, these are goals that we are currently working on. As you saw in the previous slide, our digital learning resources have grown, each serving a different purpose. Our three main resources that serve all learners across all content areas are Schoology, which is our learning management system, Nearpod, and Google Suite for Education. Now, the last time I had the opportunity to speak to our school board and community, we had just adopted Schoology as our district's learning management system. The growth in use since 2018 has been tremendous. In 2018, we had 5,100 parents elect to create their accounts, with about 3,000 of those active on a monthly basis. Now, in 2021, we have over 9,600 parent accounts created, with over 7,300 of those active on a monthly basis. We also have between 9,000 and 10,000 students that are active in Schoology on a weekly basis, which is great, so they're using it a lot, obviously, in virtual learning and in the classroom as well. Now, I attribute these increases to our campus administrators, who have leveraged Schoology to safely communicate with our students and parents, as well as our teachers, who are utilizing Schoology for a learning hub in their classrooms daily. This is where kids can get access to vital learning resources to collaborate with their instructors and peers. The next resource I want to mention is Nearpod. It's a robust learning platform where teachers can create lessons within and then push them out to individual student devices. Nearpod embeds formative assessment and many hands-on digital activities like virtual math and science simulations, virtual field trips, things like that. Nearpod can be launched in a live setting, where the teacher kind of guides that for the students, but we find many of our teachers utilize the student-paced option more often. Since our 2018 Nearpod adoption in this district, we have had over 41,000 lessons launched, over 548,000 student joins into lessons, and 17 of our teachers in the district have earned the Nearpod Certified Educator designation. Nearpod is one of the resources that we saw a huge surge in use during at-home learning and virtual learning. We then continue to see an increase in that in-class use once the majority of our students returned in person. Now, our Google Suite analytics show us a cumulative number for both students and teachers combined, so just a little, I'm going to show you how it works in instruction. Our teachers are using Google Suite applications every single day, because that includes like our Gmail and Google Drive, where all of our curriculum documents are housed. Because we cannot separate the teacher and student data, I just want to share with you the different purposes of how these applications serve us from an instructional capacity. So across the board, G Suite or Google Suite is supporting cloud-based collaboration for both students and teachers. This includes work within our most frequently-used applications like Google Drive, Google Docs, Google Slides, Jamboard, amongst many others. Students and teachers are using the different Google applications to create products and showcase their teaching and learning. We utilize our Google apps to collaborate and communicate with those learning stakeholders outside of the district by publishing our work when it's appropriate and using the safe sharing options that exist within those applications. Google Drive is also fully integrated into Schoology in the form of collaborative Google-based assignments, and our students and teachers can access all of their Google Drive items within Schoology. Our teachers and curriculum coordinators are also using different Google apps as a foundation for our ongoing curriculum writing work. Moving on to our next topic, our digital citizenship program here in the district, we strive to engage our students in learning experiences that will develop them into being positive contributors and productive citizens in this digital world that we live in. We have developed a digital citizenship year at a glance as a guideline for our teachers to cover specific topics throughout the year at the different grade levels. We've partnered with Common Sense Media and Nearpod, which I mentioned earlier, to provide our teachers with ready-made, engaging lessons. In addition to these digital citizenship lessons, our teachers have other resources at their disposal to engage our CSISD families in extending these learning experiences in the home. Our teachers also have the opportunity to engage in a one-hour digital citizenship training that prepares them to lead their students through these lessons. Not only is digital citizenship a prioritized need for our students and teachers in CSISD, but it's also present in our long-range technology plan, the Technology Application Learning Standards for Grades K through 12, and it's a required program under the SIPA guidelines for our E-Rate funding. The execution of these digital citizenship learning experiences looks a bit different on each campus, but you will see this occurring in our camp computer lab time for our K through 4th grade students. For our 5th through 8th grade campuses, you will see these delivered during their advisory periods or on a modified schedule at different times throughout the year. Our 9th through 12th grade campuses implement their digital citizenship learning in a variety of ways, some through specific CTE courses, as it's part of their standards, some during advisory time, and some also opt for that modified schedule to plan for this learning. Next year, our Director of CTE, Mr. Ross, he has arranged for a cyber citizenship CTE course to be an optional elective for all middle-through-high school students. The infusion of this course is just one more step in ensuring that our students have multiple opportunities to engage in learning that supports their growth as sound digital citizens before they leave our district. I've already mentioned professional learning needs as a crucial part of our digital learning program, but in addition to these sessions we delivered during our COVID closures, we also equipped our teachers with a library of archived webinars and self-paced learning modules that they can access anytime, anywhere. Our upcoming summer professional learning will remain virtual, with live sessions spanning over the summer months. One other professional learning initiative that I want to highlight was the addition of a job-embedded professional learning opportunity that we offer our teachers once a month. They can join in for 15 minutes of quick learning during the day, if they can squeeze that into their conference period, planning time, or even right after their school day ends. These quick sessions run once every hour for 15 minutes, once a month. Now, as I wrap up this presentation, I wanted to end with a quick preview of our instructional technology learning model. One of the foundations that we are establishing from a digital learning perspective is a solid understanding of the SAMR, or S-A-M-R, SAMR model for instructional technology. This model promotes designing technology-rich learning experiences and is predicated on the purposeful use of technology to yield the most depth in learning. Understanding and utilizing this model is a part of our district improvement plan, and we will continue to support instructional design around this model as we move forward with our digital learning support. Thank you for allowing me this time this evening to talk to you about our digital learning program, and I'm happy to answer any questions or field any comments you might have.
So you said we have about 25 campus facilitators?
Yes.
Do you know about how many extra hours a week these people are putting in?
It varies at each campus. It totally depends on the need of their campus and how many devices they have, and that looks different across each campus. So I would say probably anywhere between three hours a week to 10 hours a week, it just differs on each campus. That is a survey question that I ask my CTFs at the end of each year of, how much time did you spend this year, has been extremely heavy for the needs, so a little different than ours in the past.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I'm glad, so glad to have you in this role, even though I was personally sad when you left AMC MS and didn't get to teach my second child algebra. Obviously, what you do is an important piece of our whole instruction. I mean, we put it, it's basically a huge piece of one of the six goals coming out of strategic design, right? Not just the ecosystem that you've got for technology, but really, how do we use that technology? And the discussions about how the students best learn with instruction, but also a lot of what you talked about is how do you support the teachers? And I think, at least I heard, and I heard tonight and previously, that became very important during COVID, so thank you for all your, you and your team now, the work that went in over this last 14 months. One kind of specific question, how, I mean, I heard more about how you are supporting the teachers directly, how do you work with like the rest of the curriculum instruction team on integrating the technology in the curriculum, from that direction, instead of directly down to the teacher?
Yeah, absolutely. So I office out of CNI, I'm part of the CNI department, and I get to see my CNI coordinators every single day. So they have curriculum writing coming up over the summer, and I'll be in and out supporting, working with those teacher groups and working with them. We frequently talk about how these lessons are written into the curriculum documents, what technology is appropriate to be written into those learning experiences. So we work pretty closely creating the documentation and the guides for our teachers to be able to use to then execute in the classroom. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions?
I'm going to make one other comment, just because I think it's kind of relevant to, and it came up through strategic design, and I found it really interesting, interesting comment that we've been, we've talked about over the years about kind of getting enough devices in kids' hands, and you kind of, you know, and obviously, again, that's been important during COVID. And we, at least in my mind, I've always kind of thought counting kind of devices per kid, right? You know, can we, how many devices do we have out there? But one of the teachers made a really, in the group, made a really interesting observation that she could have 20 devices in her classroom, but if she has 23 kids in there, then it really doesn't matter, she might as well almost have zero, right? Really just having a complement set of devices for that classroom to be able to use if they're, you know, if they're going to have some kind of embedded technology where they need devices, it really, it made me think of it just that little bit differently. So if we're really asking our students to use technology, they really need, and we're asking our teachers to use it, they need the devices to do it for every student in that classroom.
Absolutely, and we work with our teachers all the time based on the devices they have access to on campus, and how can we get the most bang for our buck? So whether they only have five iPads in the classroom, or they're lucky enough to have a cart in their classroom that day, we help them design learning experiences based on the number of devices they have, so they can really hone in on those strategies we're trying to push, you know, the collaboration, the engagement, the how can you step outside of what you're limited to in this classroom by using that technology for some real deep purposeful learning? So it looks different at every campus and every classroom, and we're happy to augment our support to, you know, make that work at every campus.
No more questions or comments? Ms. Ryan, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
What a year to have your job.
It's been a long year.
All right, that's going to take us to I1, consider approval of new administrator contracts as recommended by the superintendent of schools. The first is Michael McEever, Principal of Creekview Elementary, and Megan Simak, Assistant Athletic Director. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Board members, tonight, we're recommending the hire of two different administrators. First, Mr. Mike McEever, who's being recommended for the position of Principal of Creekview Elementary. Mike's been Assistant Principal at A&amp;M Consolidated since 2016. We also have Ms. Megan Simak, who's being recommended for the position of Assistant Athletic Director, and Megan has been the head basketball coach at CSISD since 2012. Both of these individuals were selected through the interview process and possess the qualifications and experience to do an exceptional job in their new roles, and so it is my recommendation that we approve the hire of these new administrator contracts as presented.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, with none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All aye? All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. McEever, stand up. Mr. McEever, stand up, introduce your guest.
This is my wife, Brittany.
Brittany, stand up. By the way. Very good. Coach Simak, stand up, introduce your guest.
My name is Josh.
Very good. Congratulations to you both.
All right, takes us to J1, consider approval of a contract award with the Texas State Billing Services, TSBS, for the Medicaid billing of the SHARs program for one year ending May 31, 2022, with the option to extend for four additional one-year terms. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, here with additional information regarding the possible contract award to TSBC to support the district with the SHARs program is our CFO, Ms. Amy Drawes.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. So College Station ISD participates in this SHARs program, and this program allows the district to bill for Medicaid services to eligible students. But of course, we need some assistance in that billing, because that's not something that we normally do. So in December of 19, the last of a one-year renewal was up for approval, but at the recommendation of the district, we wanted to change the term of that so that it ended at a better time for us, because a contract that ends when you have service providers and training required in the middle of a school year is very difficult. So we asked that that contract be renewed for six months, which ends June 30, and the vendor approved, they were okay with that, and U.S. Department of Trustees approved that, so we appreciate it. But what that also did was that moved up the process for us to seek proposals a little bit sooner, but in the end, it will benefit us because of that transition period. So we solicited proposals. There was a committee that included business office, the purchasing department, special services, as well as some of the end-users out there in the field. They actually invited five vendors to come present and show their software. So at the end of that process, they, some of the deciding factors in there was, of course, the administrative fee, but also the friendliness, the user-friendly part of the software for our users, the reliability of the service, the integration and the ability of that software to communicate with our current software, particularly our special education software, and their training, and then last of all, references. So after going through that, it was the recommendation of the committee that we contract with Texas State Billing Services, TSBS. And this one has a little bit different term, we're going to overlap a little bit, but that will allow for some training to begin. So this particular, our recommendation is for one year, with the option to extend for up to four additional periods. So with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Just have a hopefully quick question. Does the SHARs funding actually pay for that administration, for this administration fee?
Well, it doesn't pay, we actually have to pay that separately, but that fee is based on the amount of billing services that we get, so it's based on our revenue. Does that make sense? It's not netted. Whenever you say that, I think that our, the revenue we receive already has the fee taken out, and it doesn't, but it is based on the amount of revenue we receive.
Okay.
So we do have to make a payment. You know, some things might be netted before you get it, and it's not.
Okay.
Anything else? All right.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? With none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. You had a big day. All right, that brings us to a close. Before we adjourn, let me just ask that please, everyone be safe, it sounds kind of crazy out there. We can keep going if you want. No, all right, thank you all so much, we are adjourned.